Motion by Mr. Lawrence. Need a second? On the agenda?
Do you want to suspend the rules first?
Oh, you want to suspend? Oh, we got an addition? Oh, I didn't know we had an addition. Maybe I didn't look at it. Okay. I need a motion to suspend the rules. Motion by Mr. Lawrence. Second by Mr. Barrett. Any questions? All in favor? We got two. One, two, three. Okay. Three, two.
To suspend the rules?
To suspend the rules. Absolutely.
Four to one.
Okay, four. Now we got five. All right.
No, no, no. Four to one.
Four to one.
I'm in opposition.
Opposition. All right. I need a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
This is got.
Oh, you got to read it. Go ahead. I'm ready to roll.
To our policy agenda, we're adding item 4D resolution authorizing the city of Biloxi to amend the prescription drug company amounts for city employees.
I need a motion to suspend, uh, I need a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Excuse me. I'm still reading.
Still reading? Oh, we got more?
Sorry.
Oh. Man, I can't go. All right.
To our consent.
You must eat Thanksgiving better fast.
To our consent agenda, we're substituting item 5B resolution authorizing expenditures to the Gulf Coast Symphony in the amount of $1,000. We're substituting item 5J Exhibit A only concerning change order for Gulf Breeze Landscaping. And we're also adding, excuse me, adding item 5Y Resolution amending Resolution 644-18 and approving the MOU between Biloxi Lodging and the city of Biloxi, Mississippi.
I could go now. I need a motion to accept the agenda as amended. Motion by Mr. Lawrence. Second by Mr. Barrett. Can he head to step out? Okay. Oh, uh, any questions? All in favor? Okay, three, one. Motion carries. All right. I need the mayor's report.
I have two items. First, as you know, the mayor's out of the country, so I'm stepping in just for today. I have, again, two items. Number one, of interest, I think, to council. You remember in your Resolution 598-18, you authorized us to request and then accept additional millage from the county for the Port Enterprise Fund. That additional, additional millage that they were to pay us this year, up to one full mill. We assumed that that, at the time, would be about a million and a half dollars in addition to the debt service for the old port bond. The county has verbally told us that they would like to pay us that money quarterly as opposed to all at once. Now we're at the end. And we have then sent an invoice for one-fourth of that million and a half dollars, or $375,000, to the county. And they, their board of supervisors will be dealing with that at their next meeting. So if that is approved, if that process is approved and that invoice is approved, what that means is that we will draw the 1.5 billion in four increments, the fourth being a true-up at the end based on the actual taxes. Any question on that?
Do you have any administrative end department?
Now, the county administrator suggested that doing. The board of supervisors hasn't voted yet.
So did you just say, suggest? Or suggest? When does come?
The, the, the board of supervisors has already approved the one full millage, but they have not approved the process of us invoicing by quarter. The county administrator is okay with us invoicing by quarter, but it has to go to the board of supervisors to approve, and they'll do that at their next meeting. We think they're going to approve it, and then we think that we will then, each quarter through the rest of the year, we'll, we'll invoice them $375,000, which will go into the Port Enterprise Fund for projects.
For the Port Enterprise Fund? Are you, you have to, that's how you accept the 375, but directly go to, you accept the Port? Do you have to go to the side of the port? Or it has to go to a certain part?
It was, it goes into the Port Enterprise Fund. That, that, that the county has agreed to. In our resolution, we talked about the fact that it would be, it would be used for port improvements and, and development. But there's no specific projects at this time. Those projects would come to, back to council. For us, for us to spend that money on projects would come back to council. The second item, I would ask very briefly for Chief Miller to tell you what happened yesterday with, with the 90 officers that he had on the, on the, on the road yesterday for the Trump events.
Thank you. Well, it was two full weeks of planning. It's, it's amazing to me, every, every time there's a presidential visit, just how much planning goes into it, how much, how much involvement, how much work there is from so many different agencies. But I, we, we managed to pull it off, and hopefully we didn't inconvenience too many folks by closing Highway 90. But that, that was a must. That was something that Secret Service required to be done, so we didn't have any choice on that.
Chief, chief, pull the mic a little closer to you.
You hear a little better? Okay? All right. So, like I said, hopefully we didn't inconvenience too many people by, by shutting down Highway 90, but it was something that had to be done. Bowe-Wal Road had also had to be shut down also per national security requirements. There were several agencies that jumped in and helped us. Gil Bailey, 911 Commission's in the back. Gil put together an operations communications network plan for us so we could all communicate with the various law enforcement agencies that were here, so we appreciate that very much. That was a lot of work for him. We had past Google PD, sent us quite a few officers. Wiggins PD sent us some, some officers, as did DMR and Harrison County Sheriff's Department. So totally, we had, we had about 90, 698 officers that it took on our part just to pull this off. But everything seemed to go smoothly. The Secret Service was extremely security-minded. There were some officers that showed up that were not on the roster to work from various locations, and they were not allowed in. They had to take their weapons off and lock them in the trunks of their cars before they could come in. So they really had their mind on security and making sure that there was no way for anybody to, to slip in. Protesters. We had talked with protesters early on, the ones that, that wanted to come out and protest. We, we, they asked us for some ground rules. We gave them to them. They abided by those very, very well. We had no, no issues with them whatsoever. I guess it was probably, at the height, there may have been 30, 35 of them. And they were very orderly and did exactly what we asked them to do. The ACLU sent representatives down, had no complaints from them whatsoever, but they were usually out with the protesters watching what was going on. So I'll answer any questions that, that you have about the visit.
Any questions for the chief?
Yep, yep. Joe Boni did a great job with his folks. Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the fire department did a great job. They were right there with us the whole time. I was glad to have them there, just in case something went wrong. If something had gone wrong, there was a contingency plan in place for just about anything you could think of. But appreciate everybody's support.
They landed at the National Guard Base.
I'm sorry.
Did they have their own vehicles or did they have to use Google?
No, they, they, they had their own vehicles. Incidentally, they landed at the National Guard Base because the keister cannot accommodate, my understanding, cannot accommodate the weight of, of the president's aircraft. That's the reason they land, they land there.
Thank you, chief.
There was one moment during the event last evening when I turned to somebody sitting next to me and said, "Based on the time, that motorcade is probably just coming off down Debees Road, and they're handing off between Gulfport Police Department and our police department, and we should be picking them up just about now." And that was kind of a proud moment, when you think about it.
All right.
Very well.
All right.
One other thing, chief, if, or Mike, I'm thinking, does the federal government reimburse the city for any of these expenses, or?
No. The note I have in front of me, I was going to say, is that obviously this was a very, a very large and unplanned impact on our police budget, and we'll be discussing with the council at a later date, once the numbers are all in.
So it's a, it's a mixed blessing, isn't it? Lot of headaches, lot of pride, and a lot of cost attached to this.
More die.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mike. Okay, we're going to move on to departmental reports. Person line, Oscarinda, give us an update on the infrastructure. Ms. Jennifer?
Good afternoon. I'm Jennifer Matranga, the project manager for Oscarinda Contracting. So I'll just start at the west end of the project and move my way east. We're on Porter right now, finishing up the sewer on south of Division. We should be finished with that by the end of the week. That area is really, really wet. And anyways, we should be starting with the storm drain at the beginning of next week to finish that up. We also anticipate next week or the week after, beginning work on Main Street. That work will start north of Division, not at Esters. It's going to start north of Division and move north, and then we'll come back and catch that area to the south of Division. And that will be beginning with the sewer work and then following up with the storm drain. Currently, we are finished with all the utilities on Querons, and we are, we'll be finished by the end of the week installing road base on Querons. The curbing crew will move there next week, I believe, to install the curbing, and then base course of asphalt by the third week of December on Querons. On Banaki, we're continuing to work on the jack and bore. We completed the dig pit and the push pit and the receiving pit for the sewer. That's the last bore that we have to do. The boring contractor probably arrived after lunch today to push the casing through. Can I, can I turn this little thing on? So this is, sometimes I'd just like to show you all some pictures. I know we talk all the time about how deep it is and et cetera. This is 27 feet, as you can see. I mean, it's really, it was very wet. We had to spend a lot of time de-watering, and it's, not only is it 27 feet, but that particular area, of course, we're 15 foot below sea level, so I just, you know, it's a lot of hard work. Our guys work really hard. I just thought you all'd like to see that. It's a lot of work goes involved in making it look like that, operating safely, and so just real proud of our guys for that. Um, all the, I mean, all the way to the, to the top, will you?
27 feet, you got to run it to water.
Oh, yeah. There's, there's a, there's a eight-inch pump running 24/7 that you can't see. There's well points all around, and well points suck the water up and get it out of there. And so there's, um, there's just a lot involved in all that, and then everything has to work all together at the same time. And for some reason, somebody turns off a pump, like they did on, Porter is really wet. Well, over the holiday weekend, somebody turned off our pump, so they couldn't work for three days because that's how long it took to get rid of the water. So, but it, it's very dangerous, and the guys, they're, they're just, they're doing a really great job. We installed asphalt paving on Esposito from Hopkins to Seal. That little area is complete. That's the last little, little bit in that particular few blocks. We are, uh, on Esters. I think they're at Nichols now, working at Nichols, heading east, installing the, they're in the, working in the CSX right-of-way and finishing up the installation of the sewer system. Once that's complete, then they're going to jump back and catch all the drainage in that area. We completed the installation of the base course of asphalt on Lamuze from Esters all the way to Elder. We're now in that area, working on sidewalks to the south of Lamuze, and then we'll be working to the north of Lamuze. We're installing sidewalks on Hayes and then completing the sidewalk, sidewalks all the way down Division. And over the next few weeks till the end of the year, we'll just be bouncing off of Division and catching all the streets that are paved that require sidewalks and driveways that we haven't caught. And also working on the landscaping. We're finishing up the landscaping on Percy today, and then after today, they're going to jump on Division. That way, Division will be complete with base course of asphalt, sidewalks, driveways, landscaping, and then we'll start working on any fencing repairs that we need to make. And we also finished the, um, we installed base course of asphalt on Magnolia, south of Division. And currently, we're installing road base on Magnolia to the north, uh, north of Division. And same with Querons. By the third week in December, we should have asphalt paving on Magnolia, north of That whole area of Porter and the, all those lateral streets, Cherokee, Frank P. Corso, all the way to La Salle, that whole area has been landscaped, seeded, cleaned up. I mean, that, that area, the park, it all looks really, really good up there. We, um, installed surf, the final surface course of asphalt in the area of the project known as SXSN. That's all the, the streets to the east of Oak Street, all of those streets. There might be portion of one that's not done, but those streets have surface course of asphalt now, the final course. So we're punching things out, getting street signs. We have Cruz, Collier, and Gallot Streets that are in that area that we did a walk-through today. We'll be putting surface course of asphalt down on those streets, and then we'll be striping and hopefully beginning, being out of that area altogether and beginning our warranty period for that particular section. In addition, we also did a walk-through on Dunbar, Coon, and Laurel Court. We're just working our way west to try and punch things out to where we can get the surface course of asphalt installed on those streets. We've been over there the last couple of weeks. There's, if there's a curb cracked a particular kind of way, we have to jack it out and put it back. If there's a sidewalk cracked, if there's a sidewalk that doesn't fall within the ADA code or standard, we have to pull that out and, and replace that. So there's been some odds and ends that we've gone through ourselves and punched our, punched ourselves out and with anticipation of doing the walk-through with the city today, which we did, and it went really well on most all of the streets. And since now that the meetings are recorded and we're Facebook Live and hopefully people are watching, we just still want to remind the residents that the speed limit throughout the construction area is 15 miles per hour. It's really easy to go fast on the newly paved streets. It was easy for them to go, for everybody to go fast on, you know, rock streets and, and streets that weren't paved. So, um, our guys are still working in the area, installing sidewalks, and that's working right next to the street. So we just ask people to please take caution and, you know, if your family was out there working, you know, just, just try and keep that in mind. I drive 15 miles an hour and all day long, every day, and I'm not exaggerating. Everybody speeds past me and passes me up. So it just, and then when they do that, it makes it even more dangerous for our guys. So I just ask that people just be respectful of that. And then as well, we have a lot of orange filter rock bags around the storm drain inlets. This is to protect the local waterways and to filter the, the water to where the sand doesn't get into the drainage system and then go to the local waterways. So we have residents all the time, every day, that move the bags, that think that it's blocking the drainage, but it's really not. It's, it's just preventing the silt from going into the storm drain. So we ask people to please be respectful of that and let's, you know, if we could leave the rock bags. The more we get done, the more areas that are done, we're able to remove them. When there's established vegetation, the area in, on Porter, now that the grass is coming up, we'll be able to take those rock bags out. But they're there because it's a, it's a requirement of the contract. That's all I got.
Okay. We have any questions, George?
Yeah, something on Facebook and it's live, and everybody's paying attention. Have you all added crews to work so we can get this job done faster? Have you added any extra people on the job?
We have, I mean, we have the same people we've had before. We have not.
So you hadn't had anymore?
Well, no.
Because I know you're not building like to have that many people working. We're not being built enough. So that's why I didn't know if you're trying, such you're getting finished, getting closer to get it done, so that people like, on Querons, that may be nice for them for Merry Christmas to them, so they have a little blacktop on the road. Hey, people have been suffering with two, three years, it's a lot. You know, I know you're out around doing 15 miles an hour. These people live there every day. Goes through that same stuff every day, every day, every day.
Yes, sir, I know.
So the faster you can get it done, the better off for anybody.
You're right about that. That's actually.
You finished with all the outflows, float boxes and everything on Santini and that? Everything that goes to the bayonet? Outflow boxes?
No, that, um, that particular work that's in the CSX right-of-way will be done after, after we finish with the bore. We have, we have some drainage work to do around Santini in that area, if I'm not mistaken, but it requires CSX to be there. So we're finishing with the bores first, then that crew, that's tied into the storm drainage on Banaki that I was talking about.
Have you all finished everything with Division? Or you have to go back and do anything else on Division? The whole three miles I'm talking about?
No, we're done. We wouldn't have put asphalt down if we weren't done.
Well, we have to put it down before and to whatever. I mean, that happens.
Oh, that could, that could still happen.
That's part of a contract, any contract.
I know, but yes, sir, as far as I realize, we're done.
So we're just trying to get everybody happy for Christmas, a little Merry Christmas.
I, I completely understand. Yeah.
George, Felix, your turn.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to spare?
Jennifer?
Ms. Glavin.
Parker and Elder Streets mean anything to you? What's going on there?
Does it mean anything?
Huh?
Well, we have to.
We just had a question from the peanut gallery here.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's on the list of streets to do.
Dr. Tizel? Ms. Newman?
Okay. And I have a, I have a few. Yeah, you mentioned about the, the speed, and, and I have a concern about that, too. Is there any way we can get any temporary striping? Because like you said, there are people that are going pretty fast, and I have family on that street. Thanksgiving, of course, you know, the day after Thanksgiving, we had a, a pretty bad accident in that area. But even Thanksgiving, there were a lot of people going around cars, you know, and they're going around, there's no way to tell which you're on the right side or left side or anything like that. But until we get the, how much longer will it take before we get the final pavement? Or if, if it's going to be a long period of time?
It's going to be a little while, so I can, I'll talk with the engineering about some temporary striping.
Yes.
We had discussed it before, but I, um, we'll, we'll discuss it again.
Right. Because that's the danger of people going around, and as you know, they are doing it.
Yes, sir.
Unless we can get some, you know, and we had some officers out there. They did a great job for a while, but once they disappeared, the speeding came back. So you already covered Main Street, Nixon Street, north of Division Street. I see that you guys pretty much started that. Is there a timetable on paving? As you know, some of them feel like, you know, we went to Huff Alley, then we went on over, but we skipped that one little street.
Well, we had, I think we had to finish up some storm drainage and some structures on that street, but if I'm not mistaken, that, if it, I think that they were still out there this morning, today, over there, but that's one of the next streets that we're going to. Probably once we finish Magnolia, we'll hop over to Nixon.
Okay. The rocks are there. Everything's down. I think the base coat is down. It's just sidewalks and paving, I think is the only thing left.
Okay.
Based on what I saw.
I know Warren Pavan had to pull off, so they're coming back on Thursday. So I'll find out about that and send you an email.
Okay. And of course, they've called me about Fayart Street, the north side of Fayart. It keeps, there's an area that's, of course, north of Fayart not really done, but there's an area that keeps flooding out whenever we get rain and toward the, I guess, what's that street back there? It's a good way.
Strawberry? Strawberry?
Strawberry. Well, right on side of Strawberry.
Yeah.
But if you go all the way to the back, back area of Fayart, it keeps rutting out, and a lady, whenever it rains, she's caught up in her yard, and she can't get out the yard. So if they can put something down real good and, and give her a good pace where she can get in and out.
Okay, yes. I wasn't aware of that. I'll, I'll look into that for sure.
Okay. Well, all right. Thank you. That's all. That's pretty much all I have today.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on for departmental reports. Council to receive a full report from Next Site. Okay, Mr. Chuck?
I'm Chuck Brandt, and I am the managing partner of Next Site. Appreciate you having me here this afternoon. I deal on time. How much time I have? Four or five hours, okay?
All the time in the world. All the time you need.
I'll be referring to a few notes. Mr. Kirkland asked me to come back and give you an update. It's timely. We were fortunate enough to become engaged with the city of Biloxi the middle of April of this year. We spent the first couple of months putting together all of our market analysis and preparing to start proactively recruiting retail through our developer and tenant rep relationships. So we're at about that six month, just past the six-month timeline. I'll hit on a few things. Most of my comments will be generic. We like to keep our targets confidential and clearly with developers and tenant reps looking at sites in the Biloxi area. They don't like their competition to know where they may be considering putting a location. From a research standpoint, we start all of our research efforts by being able to track people's mobile devices. So we are not collecting that information as a primary data vendor. We are licensing it from third parties. It is anonymized, but it allows us to identify consumer travel patterns to different assets within the market. So we have looked at downtown. We've looked at several of the retail trade quarters, and we've also analyzed the Edgewater Mall. And it allows us, through tracking those cell phones, for the most part, the ability to know where consumers are located primarily in the evening, primarily during the daytime, and where they are two hours before they go to a location to make a purchase. And so it becomes very in-depth data that we can use to create custom trade areas and go beyond simple radius and drive time analysis. Once we've identified those trade areas, we are putting together all of the demographic research. We have done traffic count maps so that we know where the majority of the higher traffic counts are located within the market. We have done a peer analysis. So we have identified throughout the southeast communities that look like Biloxi from a demographic standpoint. This allows us to then look at retailers that have shown a propensity to locate in similar type communities from an income, population, race and ethnicity standpoint. We have worked with Mr. Kirkland and city staff and created a list of focused properties. For the most part, there are a large number of properties available. We tend to keep it to 10 to 12. We're primarily trying to generate interest with our developer and tenant rep relationships to get them to come to Biloxi and drive the market. We have also done segmentation data analysis for the entire market in each of the trade areas. Basically, this is broken down into 65 different segmentation groups. We know how many millennials live in the different trade areas, how many retirees, how many couples with young children, how many people are empty nesters. What this allows us to do is understand consumer behaviors and attitudes about spending money. At each of those different segmentation status points, your purchasing behaviors are going to change. We've also looked very closely at all of the consumer expenditure data, so we know across several thousand variables what the So we know across several thousand variables, um, what the consumer in the Biloxi area is purchasing on both a weekly and annual basis. Um, we have mapped all of the existing retail within the market, um, and made that available to all of our contacts. And we use that as part of our marketing effort. We have put together marketing materials, um, as part of our representation of Biloxi that we use at ICSC conferences. ICSC is the International Council of Shopping Centers, um, which is seventy thousand members. It's every broker, developer, tenant rep, people like myself, cities are members of that organization. We have represented you in the first six months at six of those conferences. So we got engaged, um, middle of April, middle of May. We were ready and representing you at the Recon Conference in Las Vegas, which is the largest conference annually. We've also represented, um, Biloxi at the Tennessee Kentucky ID Exchange, uh, the West Florida ID Exchange, the Chicago Deal Making Conference, the Florida Deal Making Conference, and two weeks ago, the Southeast Deal Making Conference, which was in Atlanta. Um, we have also supported, um, several specific projects. Prior to even being engaged with the city of Biloxi, we had been contacted regarding the District on Howard project. So we had started doing some market analysis and have continued to support that. Um, we've also started analyzing and doing some market analysis related to the potential Broadwater project. I probably should have said at the beginning, one of the reasons we're here is we were fortunate enough to, uh, partner with Mississippi Power, who helped subsidize our standard call so that we could provide a more cost-effective solution to the city. Um, we also work very closely with Jim Wilson and Associates on several projects throughout the southeast. Uh, they are the owner of the Edgewater Mall. So we have provided, um, the, um, Jim Wilson and Associates with market analysis, the market analysis to assess their redevelopment efforts and leasing efforts at the mall. Um, one of the other things that we do with our data is we make it available to the city uh, so that it becomes a resource to your existing businesses and any entrepreneurial efforts, uh, within the market. I'll sort of focus on what occurred in Atlanta. Um, we set about a dozen and a half meetings for Mississippi Power, where they were coming in and talking about all of the different communities with developers and tenant reps that, um, that Mississippi Power covers in their service area. We, in turn, had about three dozen developer and tenant rep meetings where we specifically talked about the opportunities in Biloxi. In addition to the peer analysis, we have software tools that have allowed us to go in and we've taken approximately a hundred and fifty of the most aggressively expanding retailers and restaurants in the market, and particularly the southeast, and we have vetted them for Biloxi. Do they have a location? If not, where's the next nearest location? And do the demographics of the Biloxi market or the Biloxi trade areas, trade corridors match the parameters that they set for a new location? In some instances, these retailers already have a location in Biloxi, but the market is large enough and in certain areas warrants a second or third location. So we are aggressively reaching out to developers and tenant reps. Developers and tenant reps drive the entire retail process. Um, without a developer, without a tenant rep involved in that conversation, typically you have very few concepts that are going to come to a market. So we have reached out to every tenant rep firm in the southeast that represents retailers who would be interested in the Biloxi market. We have, at last count, eighty-one different developers that we work with. Our goal with those developers is to get them to drive the market. When they drive the market, they're identifying sites that we may have provided to them or they're looking for additional sites, and in some cases, sites that might have a higher invest use. Since the Atlanta conference two and a half weeks ago, um, we've had a half dozen, I think five or six, um, at least five, and I think the sixth one either has come or is coming. But those developers are coming to Biloxi and driving the Highway Ninety Quarter, driving I-ten, driving the different trade, um, areas within the market, looking for opportunities to come in and do either single tenant, um, development, multi-tenant strips, which could be as few as two tenants to as many as three or four, so your smaller seven to ten thousand square foot strips. And in some cases, some large big box, junior box opportunities. Uh, the other thing that we've done because of the uniqueness of the tourist, um, component to Biloxi is we've had conversations with two specific entertainment concepts, both of which have indicated some preliminary interest in the market. Currently, we have developers from North Carolina, Indiana, Texas, Louisiana, Alabama, Georgia, Tennessee, Mississippi, and Florida who have received market analysis and have also received a list of retailers and restaurants that we believe fit the market. As an example of some of the market analysis, I won't dig into all of the details, but I think you might find it interesting that by taking the Edgewater Mall and understanding the consumer travel patterns through the mobile mapping data, uh, the trade area ends up being approximately four hundred thousand people with an average household income of sixty thousand. Uh, that's the type of information, along with the segmentation data, the consumer expenditure information, that Jim Wilson and Associates will be able to leverage into the redevelopment process at the mall and, um, in their leasing efforts. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. George?
Yeah, you said you had eighty-one, uh, people you represent?
Eighty-one developers, yeah. We don't represent them.
Right, and you have five or six of those that's actually interested in the city of Biloxi?
We have five or six that we know have driven the market in the last two and a half weeks.
Is that normal, that low, that's less than ten percent?
Well, that's not all of them, I'm just saying there's five or six that have done it in the last two and a half weeks since Atlanta. Um, I would say that if out of those eighty-one, we've probably had a third of those that have driven the market.
Yeah, I mean, like they have like the third of them, that's twenty-seven, like they have twenty-seven coming down here, cause you might get half of them. So what are, what are you looking for to drive down, so you keep talking about Edgewater Mall, what about the rest of Biloxi?
Well, as I mentioned, we've also analyzed downtown and we've analyzed what I would call the traditional retail quarters, your grocery sto, for primarily the grocery stores within the market. Um, we're proactively, um, recruiting a couple of grocery operators to the Biloxi area. But we have looked at the entire city, the different trade quarters where those shopping centers are located, where the mall is located, and then we've also done downtown.
Yeah, that's what we do, we hide you through the Mississippi Power to get this stuff done. And the information you get, it might be secret to you, you don't want to report it, but you need to report it back to us.
Well, it's being reported, but-
I'm talking about that as counsel.
Right, I understand, but I would rather that come from Mr. Kirkland. He asked me to give you a verbal report and we both agreed. If I were to tell you which retailers were looking at the market, I would violate the confidence of the developers and tenant reps who we work with, who have indicated their interest in coming to you. If, if developer A is working with concept A, and I were to tell you who that concept was, that means I got three more developers and they're gonna show up trying to steal that prospect. So confidentiality is the only way I can manage my business.
All right, I get it.
Okay, Ms. Newman? Dr. Tizel?
Just a couple of questions, thanks for traveling here today, Mr. Branch. I'm thinking one of the biggest issues, I think, and I'm no expert in this field like yourself, is just the, the, the lack of people in East Biloxi and the downtown area. Is, is that a, relatively speaking, is that a huge hurdle? Is it a manageable hurdle? Uh, and, and how, how does that relate to maybe housing or housing accessibility in East Biloxi?
Right.
To drive development down here?
Population density clearly is always, uh, the more you have, the better. Um, a couple of things, uh, I'll answer in a roundabout way. One is, while retail is our focus, one of the things that we've worked with Mr. Kirkland on and some of our, uh, development partners is an interest in possibly doing additional multifamily in the downtown area, um, or mixed-use development, so we've introduced them to the opportunity. Um, the positive side of lack of residential population in downtown is that we're leveraging the tourist component, which is right across the street. And so there's as much interest in downtown from some of the traditional quick-service and full-service restaurants as there would be, would be if you had a large population density in downtown. Um, from a boutique standpoint, um, our focus has typically been regional and national retailers. From a boutique standpoint, one of my partners refers to it as R and D, rip-off and duplicate. Um, so we are looking at other, and we're not talking about stealing retailers from other markets, but we're talking about going to boutique fashion-type concepts or, uh, retailers that would be interested in the downtown area. Mobile, Fairho, Panama City, other areas along the Gulf Coast, and suggesting that if they're looking to expand and open a second, third, or fourth location, Biloxi is a prime opportunity in the downtown area, again, to leverage the tourist traffic.
Like I said, I'm not an expert, perfect, I think, thank you.
Councilman?
Mr. Glavin.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Martin.
I was gonna say, um, from your ward and Dexie's ward.
My ward.
Uh, the, the most curious piece of, of property in, in the city, for me, and for, for this, um, development discussion, is the intersection, the very busy intersection, maybe one of the busiest in the city, uh, the intersection of Pops Ferry and Pass Road. An area where the, the traffic count and the population ought to be driving more than it is. And I'm just really curious to figure out what is the, and hopefully they can help us with, what, what is the problem with that area?
As far as you've got large traffic counts, but you're not getting any retail development?
Lots of, lots of buildings sitting empty.
Um, competition? Are those people, i- is that traffic count being generated primarily by people who are going to and coming from work?
Work.
Versus just simply going through a normal daytime routine? Um, if it's going to and coming from work, there's a tendency for those types of consumers on the going-to-work side, they're gonna stop and get a coffee or a donut or, or something of that nature, so they're not gonna stop and shop. Uh, coming home, the typical, um, analysis that we have done says that they're going to do most of their shopping closer to home as it's grocery-related. And then from a just day-to-day, going to a junior box or going to a big box, it's going to be proximity to home address.
Interesting.
Okay, Ms. Glavin?
Yes, uh, Mr. Branch, I, I was as excited as any, uh, one on the council and, and the city of, uh, selecting a company to recruit, uh, new retail and, and other businesses for Biloxi. However, how long you said it's been since we've, uh, entered into an agreement with your company?
Uh, we, I think the contract date was middle of April.
So you said six months, is that?
Well, uh, uh, sixty days for us to do all of our preliminary analysis and then start the recruitment process. So let's say six, plus or minus.
Okay, and, uh, so how many, how many, uh, new retail in that timeframe? How many new retail businesses have we recruited and actually are coming to Biloxi?
Well, we've probably recruited several hundred, um, as far as coming to-
And out of the several hundred, how many is actually relocated?
None, and let me, that I'm aware of. We end up talking to a lot of people. When we go to a conference, we may have retailers that are coming by and picking up information from us and we never have a conversation with them. Or we may go by and drop off information at different, so when you go to a conference, retailers have their booths, we have our booths. You've got hundreds, if not thousands, of people moving around. Let me walk you through a little bit of the development process. If on the first day, we had identified a retailer that wanted to be in Biloxi, it would have been probably nine months to a year to go through the process of securing the site, doing all of the planning, doing all the architecture, engineering, and then starting construction.
How long is our agreement for?
Three years.
Three years, um, and how much do we pay you? How much do we?
Twenty-eight thousand, yeah. Eighty-four thousand.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so I want to-
You, you agree with that, twenty, that figure?
Yeah, sure.
Twenty-eight thousand, okay. Uh, there was a grocery store in, uh, Ocean Springs, Aldi?
Yep.
Are you familiar with them?
Yep.
Did y'all have any contact with them whatsoever?
I talked to the tenant reps and the company and Southern Company's National Accounts Group on a weekly basis regarding that, that concept.
So in your opinion, why would they choose, uh, that city, Ocean Springs, over, you know, the ample land and opportunity and, and bigger population over here in Biloxi?
Um, uh, this is off the record if the media's here. Um, let's say, let's say that that announcement in the newspaper was premature.
Okay, fair enough.
Um, I will tell you that in our conversations with that particular concept, um, they don't even have a distribution facility in the state of Alabama or Mississippi.
So you-
Let, let me, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, continue.
Don't mean to interrupt. They are actively land banking sites, we are aware of that. They have told us that they will not begin construction until their distribution facility in the Mobile area is completed. That construction hasn't even started. Most likely will start in two thousand nineteen. The company has told us they will not be looking to open stores along the Mississippi Gulf Coast until two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, well, we've, we've seen similar occurrences with, uh, say, an aquarium that was gonna go in one city and then they were gonna come to another city and they, today they end up in a third city. But that's good, that's all right. Couple more questions, so you, you've been kinda through the process for almost six months. You've already mentioned hundreds of, uh, potential, uh, suitors, uh, for the city. So in your opinion, going forward in the next three months, four months, how many do you think are really gonna start pursuing, uh, relocating to Biloxi?
I would say we have half a dozen or more restaurant-type entities that are aggressively looking, uh, the developers are looking for locations. Um, as it relates to grocery, the one that we discussed is probably a year and a half, two years away from opening. It may start construction late two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty. Uh, that's just the timing of the process. We've talked to a couple of other grocery operators that have indicated they're not ready to come into Mississippi. They will at some point in the future. Um, I think a large part of our effort will be in supporting a continued redevelopment of the mall and trying to backfill some of the junior boxes that are in some of the trade quarters.
Okay, Mr. President, I just have a couple more points and I'll, I'll finish. The market analysis that you mentioned, uh, is that readily available for the council to have a copy of the market analysis?
Should, should be, Mr. Kirkland is the direct contact on that.
Okay, so I'd, I'd like to request from the administration if the council can have a, a, a copy of the, uh, market analysis. I'd also like to recommend, whether it's monthly or by, or every other month, that we, uh, potentially, if it's that confidential, at least this council go, go into executive session and maybe discuss exactly what you are doing.
Sure.
Uh, this is a major deal undertaking, it, we, we definitely have an interest in it and I think the rest of the council would like to know how it affects them. And that's it, that's all I got.
We, we do provide updates, um, if not on a monthly basis, every time we return from one of these conferences.
You know, I think it's in the public best interest to hear the general, uh, discussion we're having now periodically. And I don't know if that's core, you know, our president will determine that, but I think the council is, definitely has some keen interest with what's going on in and around Biloxi to kinda hear those, you know, what kinda activity and are we just spinning our wheels? Are we gaining some traction and actually, uh, pursuing what all our goals are?
I'd connect with Mr. Kirkland when he gets back, cause he has access to some of those updates.
Thank you, Mr. Branch.
Ms. Barrett?
Um, the only comment I have is in addition to, uh, the market analysis that's been requested by Kenny, I was wondering, without mentioning names, could we get a report sort of, excuse me, I'm having sinus issues today? Get a full report, basically without mentioning any names, sort of like what you gave us today. But get this, I mean, because you covered a lot of information, I'm sitting here trying to write and there's no way I can keep up with it all. But if we can get a full report of what you gave us today, subtracting any names of potential investors or developers coming to the, uh, just to give us an idea of where we're at, what's been looked at and, and things like that, um, you know, that would be very helpful as well.
Sure, and again, um, Mr. Kirkland and a couple of other, uh, members of, uh, the administration have access to these reports that we provide as we come back from these conferences or when we hear something from a specific prospect or a developer comes to the market. So they're readily available through what we call our Basecamp management system. All right.
Okay, thank you, George, you have one more?
Yeah, one more question, uh-
Yes, sir.
You kept referring to a lot of things, people looking on the coast, the coast. How many of these places actually look in the city of Biloxi? The city of Biloxi hired y'all to been, bring businesses to the city of Biloxi. So how many is actually looking in Biloxi?
Well, we're reaching out. Every, every one of those that we've reached out to, every developer that we connect is only coming, from our standpoint, they are looking specifically at Biloxi when they come to the market. So we're not, we're not randomly saying, just go look at the Gulf Coast. I'm referencing the Gulf Coast as when they come down here, they're driving the coastal area of Biloxi. But we are specifically focused on bringing new retail and, um, development to the city of Biloxi.
Kevin, I mean, we paid a twenty-eight thousand and I want you to put something in Ocean Springs to go for it, you know? We hired you to do it in Biloxi.
We're, we're, we're focused on Biloxi.
Right.
Yeah, and I, and I just have, you know, more of an observation, um, you know, and mo- most of these guys hit the nail on the head. Dr. Tizel talked about East Biloxi, which I'm really more concerned about. Uh, Kenny talked about a grocery store and you, you brought up there are grocery stores that you're, uh, trying to, uh, get interest from. And of course- And of course, you know, if we knew a little bit more about it, we can have an opportunity to sweeten the pie, so to speak. You know, there are a lot of opportunities that we have. There are, uh, some things that we've been working on as far as groceries, grocery store ourselves. So if we can compare and contrast, so that's where the communication process needs to, uh, 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 come together a little bit more. Because we, I feel like we're missing an opportunity if you're seeing them and you're talking to them, such as one of the companies that we mentioned, uh, before, which we were also actively pursuing. Uh, if we can put some things together and right now, you know, we're not, we're, it seemed like you're over here and the council's over here. And if we can do these things in some, uh, bi-monthly, quarterly executive sessions where we don't have to bring out names, uh, we can go ahead and make some of these things, uh, uh, come, come to pass.
I'm more than happy to discuss names in executive session. Um, and again, not to be redundant, a lot of what you're talking about as far as communication, um, from us, in the six months, we've provided six-plus updates and I think Mr. Kirkland has access to those and can pass them along to the council.
Okay.
But I'm more than happy to come back on a quarterly basis or we can do conference calls or whatever.
Yeah, and the key, the key is, you know, knowing, you know? Like I said, a report is a, is, is not a good report unless it touches many people.
Oh, it does.
You know, sitting on their desk or something. Yeah, well, yeah, I think that's a little, that's a, but, you know, we need to get the ball rolling and that's, that's the biggest thing, getting the ball rolling.
The ball's rolling, I can promise you the ball is rolling.
Okay, right. Any other questions for Mr. Branch? No? Thank you.
Y'all have a great week.
Okay, have a great holiday. All right, we're gonna move on to the council's report. And before I do the council report, I wanna recognize two individuals from Mississippi Gulf Coast Junior College. Sports update. Well, let me recognize these people anyway. Oh, recognize, Ms. Chiara, she's a student at Mississippi Gulf Coast Junior College. Wave your hand with her mother, Kelly, from Mississippi Gulf Coast Junior College. Thank you guys for attending. Uh, let's see, I'm gonna go back to tennis courts update. Oh, Sherry.
I'm gonna ask, um, Christie to chime in if I give misinformation. I didn't realize they were still having problems out there, cause we adjusted the lights last year. Um, I met with the electrical engineer, our electrical engineer and Tammy Bowman. The problem is, there was four light poles that were left off cutting costs. Um, for us to do all the LED lights out there, plus an additional twenty lights, it's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars. Yes. But, or we can install three new poles with the same metal headlights that are out there and hope that that will solve the problem. Um, Christie, between fifteen and twenty thousand, just to install those three poles? To try to lighten up the dark tennis courts. Um, there is a grant that we can get and it would range between five to ten thousand dollars, but we would have to come up with the other money. Come up with the other money to match? Well, they've done that with the tennis courts. They don't play out there at night. I don't know if they would, you know, wanna do that. And as far as the county, I was always told I can't talk to the county, it has to go, you know, you have to approach Connie or the administration and I just follow up. Um, but I, what I can do right now is get prices on poles with the metal headlights, just to, to get a, an idea of what it's gonna cost. Metal headlights and it's, we can use them in other areas, I will tell you that. If we went to LED, I don't know if that can be part of the bond money or whatever. But I, I, there's no way we can put those concrete posts back that are there.
Yeah, the concrete-
I mean, that's out. But I will say, even if you go about putting metal headlights, um, talking to Bobby after he came back to the office, um, we will have to still change all of the lights, because what they've done over time, they've increased the lighting on the lights that are there. So you would do a really bright spot and a really dark spot. So we will have to add whole lights and change all the light fixtures that are already there, trying to even out the light. Cause I don't know a lot about tennis, I play tennis, but one of the tennis regulations is the, the rubens are, uh, that are on the court in different spots. So it's too difficult. The thing is, is you have some that like playing on those real lighted tennis courts and some that don't. And the only suggestion I would say right now is to try to light up the dark courts, just to see and then that will, you know.
Yeah, they're almost certainly applicable, it's what our area, it's we need to play in the boardroom, you know, as population increases in the area. So, uh, we have a solution, so.
Yeah, we have a plan.
And we can refurbish the ones that we changed out, but we can refurbish.
It's just, you gotta have-
They don't go bad, it's both of them, they're about, you know.
No, and if we, yeah, I mean, I can use them, trust me, at any of our other ballparks and all, so. I mean, we're being, you know, repairing all these courts, we need to try to, you know, do, but let's go ahead and try to get the dark courts lit up and see what that's gonna cost and I'll, I'll let you know what that's gonna cost. On another note, please let Lucy know if y'all can write in that, if y'all are gonna be part of that Christmas children's parade pile, you've told me.
Yes, ma'am. Question on the tennis courts, how many tennis courts are there, eight?
Eight.
For some reason, it's rattling around in my head that when those courts were built, the city paid for either three or five.
Paid for four and the school paid for four. And then we've been, um, resurfacing, we've gotten two grants and we've paid the portion of the remaining and so has the school. So we've shared the cost with the school and resurfacing the courts.
Okay, but, but on the lights?
We can try.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Anyone else? That's it? Okay, all right, we're gonna move on to cit-, um, council report. George, you got anything?
Yeah, uh, Sherri Bell and Parkton Recreation, uh, we had, uh, Thanksgiving dinner for the special need children. Had a packed house, a lot of people came. There, there's a lot of people gets involved in that, you know, between the city of Biloxi, the Asgard, the, the Alhammers. They, all the people get involved, help, wait, take care of everybody, provide the food. And they had a, they had a big crowd, probably maybe two-hundred-and-fifty people, but it was, it turned out a little nice that Sunday. Yeah. Yeah, so that was, that was a good event and everybody had a happy Thanksgiving, they had plenty of turkey. They had a bunch of turkeys there, but they had, you know, they ate a lot of good turkeys. Going back to the same crew, uh, Sunday, the Knights of Columbus and, uh, by department, police department. I don't know how many bikes y'all brought, Chief, but a couple, two, three dozen of them. Yeah, that's a bunch of them. And I mean, they all bring it down to the Knights of Columbus, they, they fill up that semi and the police naturally directs the traffic and it's the same group as the Knights of Columbus and it's, uh, Asgard. They all come with their bikes and load up the stuff, so there's a lot of good things happen just for that one group. That was two days, Thanksgiving and then Sunday, that Asgard group did what they did and the Knights of Columbus and Alhammers. So, uh, that's good things and they probably need a hundred bikes. They, you know, I know every year y'all do that many at least and they all, uh, they come, they help load the vans and, you know, that semi truck and they fill it up. Bad weather, they had a little accident on the road, but I mean, it still pulls it off pretty good, still had a lot of toys, so that turned out great. And, uh, I had a jogger that walks the beach in East Biloxi and they were just, he, they called and said, just tell them the good things, how nice, everything looked, how the beach's clean, the sidewalks are clean, and so, so they said, somebody needs to tell us when they actually do something good. I know it's kinda rare, but, but anyway, I'm just kidding. But they did call, so I wanted to pass it on. They said the beach and the, the sidewalk, they really look great for the Christmas holiday, so that's a good thing. You got, uh, last week, we cut the ribbon at the dusty Bon Jai. Uh, the lady grew up there pretty much on Gill. She come from, uh, I think New Jersey, somewhere that lived on Gill and she did a lot of painting. So they put all the paintings in the Creel House, which is another thing, sit there right by Old Keith, that's over a hundred years old. So here you got these old pictures sitting in an old house, so that was a pretty neat, a big crowd that night. So it turned out good. And then tomorrow at four o'clock, they opened up our new Premier Theater. So y'all can come and, uh, even if you're supposed to come, they're gonna have free drinks and that, so feel free to come. That's four o'clock tomorrow, at tomorrow, four o'clock, you'll be there, four o'clock tomorrow. All right, that's about it. A lot of things happening in Ward One, that, of course, that's not in Ward One, but it's a good thing.
Mr. Newman? Dr. Tezal?
Yeah, the downtown Howard Avenue really looks nice. I know they're still working, uh, East Howard in front of the People's Bank and are they gonna go all the way down in front of, uh-
To Main Street.
To Main Street, okay. Any idea when that's gonna be open? Roughly hazard a guess? I just, people are asking me.
Probably about ninety days.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, ninety days.
But we, we said early next year.
Okay.
Uh, we've, we've given them, you know, a little bit of weather, more weather time. Uh, I think you probably saw that we had a parking party last week where we took about thirty vehicles and parked them all over Howard Avenue and measured the diff- distances between the backs of the vehicles, measured the, the, uh, where the, 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 the parallel parking was. Just ran a fire truck up and down the road, uh, ran some big trucks in and out, just trying to see the, the, just the spacing of the thing. We're gonna be striping that, Christie can probably tell me that one, when you, when do you think you're gonna stripe it? We, we'll stripe this first section before the rest is done, so that we could open that up.
Okay, um, next thing, I noticed, uh, that there were no responses for, to the RFP that was advertised for city events at MGM Park. As I recall, than- thanks for taking the time to do that. I think the, the deadline for that was extended as well. So I'm thinking if somebody were to have a terrific, I'd say Mr. Glavine has a terrific idea for an event at MGM Park, who would he see about that?
Well, the first thing I would say on, as far as getting people interested in doing events is if, if you don't succeed, try, try again. Think we just maybe sharpen our pencil and see, see what, maybe who else we need to talk to. Clearly that, that ju- just the local people that, that, that went to did not, saw the challenges of having that outdoor venue and the fact that it's baseball park and it's not really, uh, well-suited for big concerts and so forth. So, um, we, I think we just have to rethink what we're gonna do with that park.
So if Mr. Glavine said, "I have a terrific idea,"
Yeah.
who do I point him to?
Well, I, I would say point him to the mayor.
Okay, Peter's pointing to you.
Peter's pointing to me, but, uh, you know, my door's always open.
Thank you. Uh, the only other thing is I, I just wanna make the council members aware, just as a reminder, that short and coincidentally, we received a, an email, I don't know, in front of your chair today. But I tended to, try and attend planning commission meetings when I can and short-term rentals, uh, that issue's really heating up, particularly in apartments, apartment complex, complexes and, and condominiums. And, uh, I know that a charge has been issued to the planning commission. I know they're studying short-term rentals. Uh, and, and first of all, just my observation is, the planning commission does a good job on this. Uh, the second thing is, uh, that some of the issues they're grappling with are the same issues that we grappled with when this first came up and, and some of these issues, I don't know if they're gonna be difficult to re- resolve, but I, I suspect that we kinda all need to get on the same page at some point in time. And, and Mr. Creel, you may agree or disagree, but, uh, I just know that the, the issue and the concerns from residents who currently reside in condominiums and apartment complexes, are, their concern is gonna grow under the circumstances until we really kinda nail down what we will permit or won't permit or what the process is gonna be. Uh, if folks wanna have things rezoned, because really, uh, if we all live in the same apartment complex and Kenny sells his apartment to Peter and Peter decides he wants to flip it and use it as a short-term rental, it's off the radar until we find, although the residents here know what's going on. So, anyway, it's just, it's, it's just a very thorny issue that, that we should think through carefully and just, you may wanna stay attuned, just to, to hear what constituents have to say in your wards about that. Thank you.
Mr. Glavine?
Okay, speaking of terrific ideas, um, about a week ago, uh, a gentleman by the name of Andy Cosper, uh, he called me and, uh, he said, "Listen, I've been dating this girl and I wanna propose to her, I wanna make it special. Uh, and I'm thinking about doing it at the Biloxi Lighthouse." So, uh, I called Bill Raymond and, uh, he made all the arrangements. Uh, this past weekend, uh, they showed up at the visitor center, they took some wonderful pictures and I'm proud to report that, uh, she accepted. Uh, her name is Rochelle La- Lawson. And, uh, Andy, uh, has coached soccer and different sports in, uh, in Biloxi. And, uh, he is thrilled and he wanted me to convey to the city about creating that memory, uh, for his, uh, I guess quest in life to be a, a good husband in, in the future. Um, also, uh, I'd like to, uh, uh, I'd like to recognize our firefighters, our police department. I know you've, uh, recently had a apartment fire or house fire, uh, down the street that y'all had a fight a few weeks, a couple of weeks ago. And again, y'all, y'all do a great job in responding and, and taking care of that and making sure our citizens are safe. Uh, Chief Miller, you know, the, the event we had last night, I know it was, uh, kinda stressful and, uh, all the traffic and everything and you had ten thousand people converge on the Mississippi Coast Coliseum impromptu and, and again, y'all always do a terrific job as well. Um, and Sherry Bell, yes, will be there at the children's parade. I haven't missed one of those, those are, those are great and, uh, it's great to see the, uh, citizens of Biloxi come out and support that event. And I'm sure the, will the mayor be back to light, light up the-
He will be.
Okay, so he'll be back to, uh, light the green, all the children look forward to that. That's a special moment, what's that?
Unless El Chapo get, get, catches it.
Oh, unless he, El Chapo gets him, okay. Um, there's a couple of, uh, things on the agenda today, uh, we'll delve into it in a minute, but, uh, it, it has to deal with some more developers wanting to do, uh, some single-family homes and some multifamily homes. I would ask the council to consider it. There's a growing need as our population continues to increase. Um, Jerry just reported, I think, that we had year-over-year twenty-eight million dollar increase in tax collections or? Build, building permits.
Forty-eight million dollars. We've got some, uh, she did, uh, calendar year, it's simple and residential. We were, uh, over thirty, thirty percent of that and we're over forty-eight million dollars for the last, uh, year.
So, uh, again, I would tell next site, they better bring, they better start recruiting because we're gonna have a lot of needs for these, uh, new residents that are moving in and they, they certainly gonna have a need to shop and that, that grocery store that we sorely need in East Biloxi and, and also on Pass Road. So, uh, keep up the great, great work. Thank you.
And, uh, I have just, I wanted to get an update on the, uh, crosswalk over there by the MGM Stadium, stadium.
Well, that's an M, as you know, it's an M dot, uh, project, so we can tell you what we've got secondhand.
We can put that next week, okay, go.
I can give you, get you some more information, but I do happen to know either tonight or tomorrow night, they are going to put the bridge in place.
Okay.
Um, they have scheduled Highway ninety to be closed between, uh, midnight and five AM. So if anybody wants to go see them, fly that big thing across the, the highway.
And what date is that?
Either tonight or tomorrow night. Um, that was what I got from them, uh, this morning, actually.
Okay.
So I don't know exactly, I guess it kinda depends on, they're still putting it together and welding it and that kinda stuff. I guess it depends on that. But if you'd like more information on the project in, in general, I can get that for you.
Okay, right, okay. George, George wanted, George wanted to have a, ask a question quickly.
I know it's sitting right there, who's gonna maintain it? Unless it's an M dot project, they're gonna maintain the lighting, the heating, the security, everything, who's gonna maintain all that?
It is my understanding, and I don't know if this has changed, that when this is built, that M dot's gonna hand it over to the city. Has that changed?
Yeah.
Say what?
It's gonna be dedicated to the city, it's gonna be the city of Biloxi's when it's done. M dot's gonna give it to the city.
So that's an added expense that we gotta absorb? So we have an elevated trailer for the homeless, is what we have? I mean, who's gonna, I mean, I'm, I'm, that, I know you're laughing, but that's gonna be a serious problem. When it's cold, they're gonna be in there. And I mean, that's a serious problem for the city of Biloxi. And then you build another one, which we don't need. So you have two problems. That's an added expense. That's a lot of money.
Okay, George, I'm gonna finish my report. Thank you, Christie. I appreciate that. And I just wanted, uh, catch up with Sherry, uh, later on about, uh, Ms. Travis and the program we got set for February. Just wanna tie up with you on that later on. Okay, okay. That concludes my report. Okay, we wanna go into citizen comments, uh, we got forty-five minutes, three minutes per person. Um, would anyone to my left would like to come up and speak? Anyone to my left? Anyone to my right? Anyone in the back?
Oh, y'all out there? Hello?
With all hearts being satisfied, we're gonna move on to the policy agenda. Ordinance number A, Lucy.
Ordinance amending section seventeen-two-ten-ten of the Code of Ordinances relating to street trenching and right-of-way maintenance resurfacing and restoration.
Need a motion on it?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Dr. Tisdale, second by Ms. Newman, and that is our first reading. On to number B. Letter B.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment for property identified as an unaddressed parcel situated in the northwest corner of Cedar Lake Road and Tribe Drive from RS seven-point-five medium-density single-family to RM thirty-high-density multifamily.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Glavine, second by Dr. Tisdale. That's also on the first reading. Okay, resolution C.
Resolution to grant preliminary subdivision plot approval for a seven-lot, single-family residential subdivision to be known, known as Exiliv Estates subdivision for property identified as nineteen-twenty Brazier Road.
I'll move it.
Motion by Mr. Glavine? Need a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions, Mr. Glavine? Dr. Tisdale?
Nothing.
Any other questions?
They had a problem at first and they sent this back. Did they correct the problem? Was that all the traffic problem? What was the problem with the subdivision? That's why they sent it back once before.
They did send it back and it came back and they, they were satisfied that, uh, it met all the requirements. I, I think they had some questions about traffic and stuff like that, but it's. Jerry, you, you have any?
On the original, on the original drawing, the, the flow of traffic was not correct. The, the first phase, and this is just the first phase, it's gonna be seven lots. And it's actually going to face the subdivision that is already there when you go in on Waters View Drive. There was a connector that, uh, was put off of Waters View Drive that came to the west and then turned south. And there was no reason for that connector. It just, uh, introduced more traffic into the existing subdivision. So what's happened is they removed that connector. It wasn't necessary. Phase one will be six lots along the existing road with one of those lots being there for water retention, which is necessary. And then when they come back with phase two, it'll just be a cul-de-sac road that comes in with a cul-de-sac at the end. And that'll be, uh, sixteen more lots.
I remember Kenny telling them about they had the problem with the traffic before. I just wanna make sure they took care of the problem.
They did, yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions? We're gonna call for a question. All in favor? Six-zero, motion carry. Need a motion on a consent agenda? Oh, we have one more? Four E? Four D? Why don't we have V? I didn't get that updated? Okay, go ahead, Lucy.
Resolution authorizing the City of Biloxi to amend the prescription drug copay amounts for city employees.
Come on.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence?
I'll second.
Second. Second by Mr. Glavine. Any questions?
This is where we took, uh, five-dollar copay and made it zero, trying to drive the, now we have to have somebody, these two, uh, in the back. Y'all can come up here. Both of y'all gotta do a little work for a change. I know it's kinda rare, you and Jill.
Okay, gotcha. Copay is five dollars.
That's what we did. Yeah, you can come up there, Jill. What we did, we, we just taking a chance. We're gonna reduce the five-dollar copay, which is not a bunch of money, and make it zero to drive as many people we can in the city who need to be explained what we're doing to utilize the zero copay and then drop the price of insurance. Even though Mike said we had any problem with a, a few things that it's up a little bit now. But the purpose is, is to try to lower the cost and get them using the generics, which is way cheaper. In the second tier, we dropped ten dollars, so we could try to drive them down to the no copay and then a ten dollars left. But it's, and it helps us, the citizens, and I mean, uh, city, uh, the city workers, you know, six hundred and something of them. There's quite a few. We got about two thousand people actually on these plans.
About sixteen hundred, sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred, something like that.
So, I mean, we just taking the chance and we agreed at this one, we did the budget workshop to take a chance to see if this'll work. We'll, we'll find out. If it don't work, then we'll adjust it next year. But we're just hoping that this will drive down the cost. 'Cause when you get to the generic and everything, it's way cheaper. When you talk, it's, it's, 'cause some of the prices on the tier three and four, they're three, four hundred dollar prescriptions. But we can drive them down to something that's way cheaper, it's eight, ten, twelve dollars. And along, we self-insured, the city, so in the long run, it helps the city financially. So that's the purpose of trying to, I know you looked at it different ways, your take on it, you know, Si, you know? But we have to educate. You said you willing to meet with Jill and educate the employees to let them use it. So we have, I was probably wondering on it today, we have a whole month, 'cause this don't take effect until January.
Correct.
So.
Correct. And Blue Cross needs thirty days' notice, so we're, we're within that window. We're good on that. If you wanted to do a one-one effective date?
Yeah.
Could do that.
So I don't know if you and Jill have to get together and set these days up. You have to get it with Mike Leonard and set up with the different departments and explain to them what we doing and why we trying to do it, trying to help them in the long run, but also trying to help the city.
Uh, repeating back your words, councilman, um, we need to take a chance and, uh, and we're hoping. I would say hope's not really an option here. The, the experts who service our insurance, both Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and, uh, the Banks Insurance Company, Bank Corp. South, has told us that this is gonna cost us more money.
Yeah, well, they've been wrong before.
If it costs us more money, either the council's gotta make that up at the end of the year, or we take it out of the employee's pocket. Last year, this council for fiscal eighteen approved, uh, an increase to the employee contribution to the medical insurance, self-insurance form, uh, plan. As a result of that, we finished with a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar residual at the end of the last fiscal year. Two-hundred-and-forty thousand out of seven million's not much. It's a very small percentage, but we did finish positive. Right now, as we sit, two months into the year, we're seventeen thousand to the good. It only takes one claim to put us in the negative. We get in the negative at the end of the year, if, if, if this hope doesn't work out, if this take-a-chance doesn't work out, we've got two choices. Either we gotta pony up some more from the city, or we've gotta raise the employee contribution again. I just don't think it's worth the chance. And, and I'm not an expert, clearly not as much as, uh, the business you grew up in. So you, you know more than I do about this, but the, the guys that, uh, we do business with have told us this is gonna cost us more.
Let me just, and if I may, uh, I don't disagree with anything you said. I think, you know, I think you make good points trying to drive people from tier three and tier four down to tier two and tier one. One of the ways you do that is to lower the cost of the lower-cost drugs, drive them down there. But to me, in my opinion, to make anything free does not encourage the right kinda behavior. Right now, it's a five-dollar copay. The next tier, tier two, is a fifty-dollar copay. So if somebody's not making that behavioral change right now, when something could cost them fifty dollars or five dollars, I don't see them making that same change when it could be forty dollars or free. You know, you're looking at a forty-five-dollar difference today, the spread from tier one to tier two. If we make these changes, you're looking at a, a forty-dollar difference. So it's the same money, the same principle. Uh, some numbers for you. In the past twelve months, category-one drugs, there have been fourteen thousand and change prescriptions filled. So a five-dollar copay results in about seventy thousand dollars. So those are people that are already getting their category-one medications. Those are copays that the city essentially will say, "Hey, we're funding that now" in hopes that we're driving more people down into these category-one copays. So if you, if you made category-one free based on the last twelve months' data, you'd be absorbing an additional seventy thousand dollars. If you reduced the category-two copay, there were four thousand two hundred prescriptions category-two in the past twelve months. So if you reduce that by ten dollars, you're looking at forty-two thousand dollars. So you're looking at a six-figure change in hopes of encouraging behavior. And that is the right thing to do, is to make the behavior go down. But in this case, I know budgets are tight, you know, if you want to do that, my suggestion is if you, you have that money available to pay the claims, if you wanna do it. But don't do it thinking that, and when I come back here twelve months from now, we will have saved money based on this. This is a long-term trend change you're trying to do. It's not gonna be a short-term, instant financial impact. So if you wanna do it, have the funds available. That's my suggestion.
So, but just like, if you look at the top, the, the top two, three and four, it's four, five thousand. Those prescriptions run three and four hundred dollars. So if you can drive half of them out there, you'll save a hundred thousand dollars easy.
I'd love to.
It ain't that hard to figure that out.
Like I said, I agree with you on that.
It was just all numbers. I know the seventy thousand, the forty thousand, roughly a hundred, ten thousand. But when you're dealing with those three, four, five hundred dollar prescriptions, we pay for that.
I agree.
That's huge.
Let me get, get some other, other questions in. Uh, Ms. Newman?
Since I've been on the council, I'm pretty sure we went from zero to five dollars. So why would we want to go back down to zero if it wasn't working the first time? And I believe you're the one that says we should go to five dollars, so.
No.
Yeah.
I don't think Mr. Lawrence has ever been in favor of it. We did have Blue Cross come in. We did have their team of, of pharmacists and we did have their analytics team look at it and, and they, you know, agree with the position I'm presenting today is that if you don't have skin in the game and you wanna go get a prescription filled, the city's paying for it a hundred percent. The employee's not paying for it at all. What's to tell the employee, "Well, you know, it's been thirty days. I still have ten pills left, but I'm gonna go get it filled anyway. It's not costing me anything." You know, that's the behavior we're trying to discourage. Now, we're trying to also encourage people to make good decisions, but I think now with tier-one being five dollars and tier-three being sixty, tier-two being fifty, they're still not making that decision even though they could save money. And my opinion is I don't see them making that same decision if it is free versus five dollars.
Okay, Dr. Tisdale?
All right, so I just wanna be sure here, 'cause I've heard some figures. So currently, for category-one pharmaceuticals, the copay is five bucks.
Correct.
For category-two, the copay is thirty bucks.
Correct, uh, it's fifty, fifty. So category-one is five dollars, category-two is fifty, category-three is sixty, category-four is eighty. Yes, that's correct.
Hmm, okay. That's, that's the first thing. I wanted to clarify that. The, the, because in the resolution, the figures are different. The next thing is category-one, and I know you don't have a list of the, the pharmaceuticals that comprise each of these categories in front of you. Are there any opioids that would fall, prescriptions that would fall in category-one or category-two?
I can't answer that question without looking at it. I would doubt it. Mr. Lawrence may know more than, than I would on that.
They're too high.
Okay. The, uh, that's what I figured, but I wanna be sure. The, the other thing is, I'm all, and, and I kind of agree with you on the, the zero copay. And the reason is with zero copay, my, my first thought is if I'm getting medication and it costs me nothing and I have a prescription for, to have it refilled three times, then I'm better after one. I can keep showing up and getting free meds to stockpile or sell or share or whatever. I don't know if that happens. I suspect it does, okay? But the other thing is, I, I would, I just think folks are more likely, if they have some skin in the game, to deal with this in a more reasonable manner. And, and part of it, again, I say this every year, part of this is educating our employees on what we're trying to achieve, how best to achieve that. And it would be really good if we had some sort of barometer to inform staff that, hey, we're, we're trying to move everybody to generics and it appears to be working. That's good. Uh, because if it's not good, then we either have to increase the copay or reduce some of the benefits and move from a non-standard to more of a standardized plan. So there, I mean, there, there are a lot of things to consider here. The, the other thing is that concerns me a little bit is we know that we were eating into the residuals over the past few years and finally we've stopped that, which is a good thing. But we really don't know if this past year with these new, uh, copays, we really don't know if one year's worth of data doesn't comprise a trend. So it might've been an extremely good year and we don't know it. It could be a horrible year. So I'm, I'm inclined to really keep what we have for another year and do a better job of educating our employees on what we're trying to do. And then next year, ten months from now, we'll say, when we're talking about budget and can get into some of this, is look and see what the, the numbers generated from year two to see whether or not what we're trying to do, we're, we're achieving. And that is just to deal with these issues more responsibly, more cost-effectively, so we don't end up down the road having to trim benefits or raise copays. So, thank you.
Ms. Glavine?
I just have a couple of comments. Um, you know, our plan is our plan. It's a self-insured plan. We don't have the standardized Blue Cross, Blue Shield plan, and there's a lot of advantages to that. And there, there are some expenses related to it as well. I, I know for the past five years that I've been on the insurance committee, we've worked very, very hard. The information you provide, you know, I, I can't tell you how critical it is that we look at that because we, we've kinda tracked the use of these scheduled drugs to be able to determine, you know, why are people going to a certain schedule versus not going to another schedule? And we've worked hard trying to do it, and Dr. Tisdale touched on it. A big part of it is there, there's a missing piece that they just, that's what they're used to doing. And so that's where they went. And so I, I totally agree to educate our employees on where those options are and how it affects us in the future, 'cause we got, we'll be sitting here, uh, you know, next year, making insurance decisions on copays, what the premium is, where the scheduled, uh, drugs are gonna be. We've even talked about the higher, uh, drugs go to a percentage and not necessarily the eighty dollars as it, as it stands right now. Just to try to get a hold of those expenses and keep a very good self-insured plan. So, um, I don't know how big of a difference. I know if it's successful, we're gonna give, uh, Councilman Lawrence all the credit. And if it isn't, we're gonna come look at Si Easterling and, and ask him why it wasn't successful.
Ms. Mayor?
If this is passed and we see that it's not working, is this something that we can change in the middle of the game? Or do we have to wait until next year to do that, or next budget?
You can, uh, like Dr. Tisdale said, though, you know, it's, at, at what point do you have enough data that you can determine a trend and decide it's not working and pull the plug? You know, I think you need at least a year to try it out and give it a full year. If we were to make the change, that would be my recommendation. But to answer your question, with the right amount of notice, given Blue Cross thirty days, I'd recommend at least sixty days to get it updated in the system, let the employees know, educate people that the copays are changing. We could make that change midstream, although I don't, I don't see it happening. I don't recommend that at this time.
That's all I have.
Okay, and I, I have, based on, on what you know, and you've been in this game long enough, do you think we're, we, we would probably end up taking a, a, a hit on this one?
There would be an initial expense to it. And then what Mr. Lawrence is trying to do is change the behavior. And that's what we're all trying to do, is change behavior, educate employees, educate members to not use the expensive drugs. There's an app, you know, Blue Cross has an app. You can type in your drug while you're in the doctor's office. Say, "Okay, wow, that's a tier-four drug. It's gonna cost me eighty dollars. Doctor, is there a better drug I can take or is there an equivalent?" They can do that. We need to educate the people to do something like that and make that change. And what I'm afraid of is if they're not doing that now, five dollars is not going to encourage them to make that change, to make, you know, that proactive decision based on their healthcare. So while there would be an initial expense, while people learn the behavior, the ultimate goal is to teach them that behavior. And my hope is that we could do that, whether we do the copay change or not do the copay change, 'cause that's in the best interest of the plan and the best interest of the city.
All right, but right, as of right now, you don't think that behavior'll change? Of course, no one has any notice that this is getting ready to go into effect. So most of the people are just gonna keep on going and keep getting what they get. And we'll probably end up losing, as you say, the seventy-three, I think you said, seventy thousand dollars and?
It'd be seventy thousand on tier-one would be the, the added expense if everything stayed the same. In category-two, it'd be forty-two thousand. So there'd be an initial extra expense, you know, on the plan. But hopefully, behavior would change and you'd get some of those tier-three and tier-four drugs, those people down to tier-two and tier-one. That's the ultimate, the goal of Mr. Lawrence.
So we're gonna take a hundred thousand dollar chance.
Si, while, while we have you, the resolution apparently has a couple of errors and we might wanna correct.
That blames, that's, that's Jill's fault, I believe?
No, not necessarily. It's probably mine too. So category-one is currently five and, and the proposal is to go to zero. What is category-two currently?
Category-two is currently fifty and you're proposing it go to forty?
Yeah, ten dollars less.
And, uh, three and four would remain the same? What are they?
Sixty and eighty, respectively.
What sort of drugs are in category-four that could be replaced by a one or a two? What sort of drugs are in category four that could be replaced by a one or a two?
There's not many. So the, the, when you're looking at any drug that Blue Cross will pay for, and Blue Cross is the administrator for your plan, they have a team of pharmacists that will look at what drugs are available for specific disease states, what drugs are coming off a patent, what drugs are going generic, what drugs are coming to market, what the prices of these drugs are, and make determinations based on what is available for that disease state, where to place certain drugs, based on outcomes and the data I just said before. So to, to answer that with a specific type drug, type four is, category four is going to be your most expensive drugs, but it could also be drugs that perhaps, uh, there's a generic equivalent that has just come off a patent that has the same outcomes. They, they may place that generic equivalent at category one or category two and move that other drug that maybe was a two to category four. Because they're doing the same thing we're trying to do, they're trying to discourage behavior. They don't want you taking that expensive drug when there's a less expensive drug with the same outcome available. So category four is going to be anything from those type drugs to your hepatitis C medications that cost sixty thousand dollars a month, or anything to that effect, your specialty type drugs, or drugs that just, uh, have a generic equivalent or better alternative.
So you also had the problem, to clarify all this, you know, like I said, I've been doing it for fifty-eight years, solid medicine. Those ones in threes and fours are so far along price-wise, the city's paying sometimes twelve to fifteen hundred dollars a prescription for those drugs, and yet they could be in the lower two, where the cost of the city. And that's why I had, had this problem with y'all before with the Blue Cross. You don't take the stuff out of there, you leave it in there. Okay, but those things could be handled with the, and the reason for the no co-pay is to help the people on the bottom that make the least amount of money. I know four, five prescriptions to somebody don't sound like, but to somebody that has three or four kids making twenty-five thousand, that's twenty-five dollars. That's big, when they don't have to pay anything, they'll go get the prescription filled and stay in the low end. The biggest part, the expensive ones, if you fill two or three of them at fifteen hundred dollars, that's forty-five hundred dollars. So to state that you're going to lose seventy thousand, you're not. You won't lose anything if you change them down to where they're supposed to. If it stays exactly the same, yeah, you lose the seventy thousand, which is fourteen thousand five dollars, times five dollars is seventy thousand dollars. But the idea is to drive them down to the zero, and you have to give them a reason. Anything free is free. I don't care if five dollars, ten dollars, if it's zero, it's zero. It makes a difference, and it'll help the lower-income people in the city. And all we do, I said to do it for one year and try it, and you know pretty much whether it's going to work or not. To me, so it's a chance to take for the city. I think it could help the people on the low end not making the high-end money, you know? And then if you can drive them out of that three and four, you look at the average price of them through, you didn't say anything about the prescriptions. These are when the generics run four, five dollars, them things up there twelve, fifteen hundred dollars, eight hundred dollars, a ton of money up there. So until you're educated to get them out of there, that's the key. And that's why I said we'd do this for one year and take a shot and see what it says, you know? And if you lose money, you can lose money anyway. You lose money with what we're doing now. And what you got to do is you got to take it out of the general fund, or you got to do something, or you cut services. You know, we did that already with the employees, we had the fifty dollars and stuff like that, you know, to balance the thing. Well, I'm just thinking a chance to take care of employees, give them an opportunity to lower this, and that's what we do for one year.
Okay, anyone else have any other questions?
Yeah, my, not a question really, a summary comment, and that is, I think we're all trying to do what's best for the employees. We want to manage this program as best that we can. We've got an expert, we, we pay his company for his knowledge and his expertise. We've asked a few questions, and he's given us answers to kind of guide us to do what's best, understanding that we're free to accept that advice or not. The, uh, again, I go back to the folks who are really going to make a difference. It's not Cy, it's not the council, it's the employees who use the medication, who have an opportunity to go with a generic product if they will ask or demand a generic product. And, and for those that don't, then that individual is not managing these pharma costs effectively. And all it takes is a number of folks to do that, and that is not, not do what's best for the group. And at the end of the year, then, we're having to come up with several hundred thousand dollars because the self-insurance reserve fund is, is tapped out. And that's the, that's the trend we tried to reverse, and, and I think we did. So I just think it's a bit premature to change right now. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, there's this one thing, it's not going to be several hundred thousand. You don't talk about a hundred thousand dollars, if you don't take, if you don't change the thing, and you don't change one prescription, the most it's going to be is seventy thousand on the five dollars. So it's not several hundred thousand.
Okay, what...
That's not going to happen.
What, what we heard was, we finish this year a quarter of a million dollars to the good.
The year before, forty thousand to the good.
The year before, forty thousand to the good. And the year before that, I did the research, at one time, we had a couple of million over there, and over the years, that's dwindled, okay? And, and the thing is, this two-hundred-and-forty thousand that we have now, if that was a good year, that's great. Maybe we could afford the seventy thousand. If it was a, a, or if it was a bad year, if it's a good year, we can afford it. But if next year, all things being equal, we finish three-hundred thousand dollars in the red, and in addition, we have another seventy thousand, then we're coming back to say, well, we have to dump another four-hundred thousand dollars from the general fund into the self-insured reserve fund. And to help us do that, by the way, we're going to have to ask the employees to increase, uh, their, what, what they're donating, or what they're contributing to their co-pay and their insurance. So like I said, we're all trying to, to get to the best result possible. And everybody that's, everybody's in the room that needs to make this happen, except all the employees who actually make it happen. That's all, thank you.
Okay, I'm ready to call for a question. All in favor? Huh?
I'd, I'd like to offer an amendment to correct the amounts.
Oh, you want to correct the amount in amendment?
They reflected what it actually needs to be.
Lucy, the correct amounts are, tier one is five dollars. I think Mike has it right there.
Yeah, that was the, see that. He just handed me that, that paper, that amendment. I was late getting that thing.
I had it, but you lost it.
Yeah, I lost it.
Do you need her to read it?
Okay, you're going to offer amendment to correct it?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead and, um, you're going to make the motion and the amount? Could you call it? You did it?
Yep. Does everybody need to know what their amounts are?
Yes, please, for the record.
What did I do with the, my paper?
Resolution reads, category one prescription drugs would change from a co-pay of five dollars to a co-pay of zero dollars. That stays the same. Category two prescription drugs would change from a co-pay of fifty dollars to a co-pay of forty dollars. Category three, sixty dollars, and category four, eighty-dollar prescription drugs would remain the same.
Okay. You're making a motion? Okay, and a second?
A second.
Second by?
Make sure it's correct.
Okay. You want to make sure it's correct?
That's what he said, the zero co-pay.
Zero co-pay.
And a forty-dollar co-pay.
Absolutely.
The second was only ten dollars.
So the amendment is just to correct the amounts?
Just to correct the amount. So we, we're, you, you made the motion on the correct the amount, second by Mr. Lawrence. Any other questions? All in favor? For the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, two?
To the amendments.
Three. Three, and all, uh, all against? Two, you're abstaining? Barrett?
He voted for it.
You voted for it, okay. So it's four, three, four, two. Four, two, motion carried. That's on the amount.
Just to correct.
Just the amount. Just the amount.
To correct the co-pays.
Just to correct the co-pay.
That's all it is.
Now, we already have a motion and a second on the actual, um...
So now we need to vote on the, uh, emo-?
Motion as amended.
A motion as amended. So all in favor on the motion as amended? One, two. It's Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Glavine, all against? One, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four, 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 two. So only six people. Motion do not carry. I need a motion on the consent agenda. Motion by Dr. Tisdale, need a second? Second by Mr. Barrett. Any questions, Mr. Barrett? I'm going to go with you first. You're good? Ms. Glavine?
I, I am going to recuse myself from the addition. I don't know which one it is, but...
What number?
What number is it? Y.
Y.
Ask him why again. Dr. Tisdale?
Uh, yes. Um, on item M, that's a resolution authorizing a settlement of insurance claim with brick global specialty. Uh, and the, the city's receiving seventy thousand dollars. And sixty-two thousand dollars of that is slated to go, is proposed to go into the legal general account, and the remaining eight thousand dollars to general fund under recoveries. Uh, and this is a result of a lawsuit in federal court. And typically, wouldn't we have, I mean, typically, these, these recoveries go into a fund. I guess the general fund for recoveries, and then if there's, uh, a reason to move money or whatever, we have a, a budget amendment, that's typically what we do. This seems to be a bit unusual. Is there any reason in particular that's being done this way?
Yeah, in October, we asked to move money from the general fund into legal general to pay for that expense for the scheduling expert. And basically, the direction was, we don't have any money in the general fund to do that, take it out of the legal fees instead of the expert. Uh, that was a, that sixty-two thousand was basically an eight percent reduction on that line item. The, uh, which is basically a month of legal, legal fees and expenses. So now that we have money coming into the general fund, this was not anticipated, it's new money. We could put it all in recovery and move it back, but it's, it's new recovered money and, and, uh, it's basically to try to replenish what was, what was taken out.
And I can understand that. What I'd prefer that we do is just put it all in recovery and then amend, amend the budget as we do typically with these other departments.
It, uh, to me, it, it falls in the category of pay me now or pay me later. We know that there's a sixty-two thousand dollar hole in the legal budget that is ultimately going to have to be plugged. We can plug it now, or we can plug it later, but we're going to have to plug it sooner or later.
We, we're going to spend everything in the legal account by the end of the year?
We may not, but...
Well, and that's my point, only because what, what I continue, what I continually heard during the budgeting process was, this is just a planning, it's just planning, that's what a budget is for, planning. So all I'm doing is just flipping the script a little bit and saying, well, you can come back to us in April if you need more money, and say, hey, here's where we were, remember, we had this unanticipated expense, blew a hole in the budget, we're to the point. I mean, we do that all the time. That, that's all I wanted to say about it, I don't want to argue about it, it's just how I feel about it. Thank you. The only, the only other thing I have, uh, Mr. President, is on item Y. I've not had time to look over that. That's a resolution amending and approving the Bluxey Lodging Margarita Bill. You may want to step back here.
Councilman, the only thing that changed, the only thing that changed is the exhibit that was missing from the original MOU. We just added the exhibit.
That's all, that's all I need to know, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Newman? Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I'd like to, somebody explain you. That's about the most sand nothing I've ever read in one of these things. Y'all put some good things together. This one here is pretty, you talk about Circle Village, that's what this is. First of all, I don't know what we tied in with Gupford for. I don't know why it takes three parties to do anything, and I don't know what you're actually giving up. And why five years? How much is it going to cost you? Are we just playing for the train to fly back for Cliff and the mayor go back and forth to Columbia? What are you getting out of here? They ain't getting nothing out of here. They want to come do something with Bluxey, let them come. What you got to sign this?
Councilman, what I'd recommend, uh, since the mayor's not here and he's in Columbia, that you table this and let him explain it when he gets back, since he's down there visiting them now.
Wait a minute now, Mike, you the one always said we had tableitis.
Yeah, I did say you had tableitis.
You always say, you always complaining about the council, now you want to table.
With this one, it just seems like it would be appropriate. We didn't know he was not going to be here when that was put on the agenda. I, I think when he comes back from Columbia, doing this exchange with the Harrison County Development Commission, that he might be able to shed some light on why we need to do this.
You're going to ask the rest of the council, because I just, I don't see any sense in it myself, but that's up to them what they want to do.
I move that we table itch.
Table itch.
I'll second ditch it.
Okay, we got a motion and second on tabling you. Any other questions? All in favor?
I'm going to table the mayor.
Okay, six, zero. You will be tabled.
All right, another one I want to ask about is K. We got all this reduction and adding, reduction and adding. And then, uh, while we had twelve days of that, who's representing this? And the lights in that wasn't installed, so we're not going to install the lights at all? According to just, y'all, did y'all read these things y'all give us?
Yes.
Okay. Well, this said we didn't install the lights, so it subtracted money from it. So we're not going to install the lights?
No, the lights are installed. I'm trying to remember, um...
Those days.
One of them, there's two change orders, one of them's just for days.
Five minutes, man.
The other was for quantities.
Yeah, and I'm trying to remember what the quantity is.
Uh, in the notes I have, Kristi, uh, quantities increased to twenty-five thousand dollars, and a decrease of quantities totaling sixteen thousand. So it resulted in an increase of eighty-six hundred dollars with a final revised contract.
And these are just at the end of the project, it's the summary quantities that went up and down. They installed lights, they probably planned for, they planned for more lights than what they really installed, made field adjustments, so this is just...
And decreased an amount of five fifty-three seventy-five for lights in traffic bed that were not installed.
That's correct. So some of the lights that were planned to be installed were not installed, but there, there are lights along the entire length of the boardwalk.
So why, why was these taken out, I mean, five hundred dollars? I mean, it's not that much of money.
Yeah, I can get you specific information why this one in particular.
We need lights everywhere.
Can we put those over at the tennis court?
We can try.
I'm going to lay up them elevated trailers, so we might light up everything.
Yeah, and it is, it is, the whole way is lit up. I don't know why the specific one wasn't installed. I'm sure there was something that happened in the field, maybe a conflict, and why it didn't go in, and I can find out for you.
Why was the twelve days added?
Probably just weather, weather and issues that come up during, during construction.
And remember, we gave them a stop work order during cruising the coast.
During cruising, we stopped them during cruising.
Gave them a ten-day stop work order during cruising the coast. So we have to give them ten, those ten days back on hand.
So that the condos and stuff had access to the beach, or the residents did.
Anything else, George?
That's it?
Yeah, I was going to, that's what I was just going to put the X. I was just trying to bear what we're doing here, accepting a proposal with, uh, consulting for the small craft hall.
Right, Terricon, as you remember, we've talked about this in the past. Terricon is a geotechnical company, and when we have, we do work as a city, we have to have a third party, other than the contractor himself, do this, do the testing, correct?
That is correct.
So this is the third party, it's still charged to the capital project. It's charged to the capital project, but we, we pay them direct and not through the contractor, because we can't have them beholding to the contractor when they're testing their materials.
I don't know when we first talked about all this, we talked about that they were going to have to move the monuments and everything. Have they adjusted all that?
They have not moved the monument yet, but they are planning to move the monument.
That's why I thought this whole...
It actually will be a change order to their contract.
I thought that was, uh, terrible to do that. I mean, that's why I didn't, didn't care about those pedestrian walkovers anyway. I think you go into a lot of trouble for nothing, but I mean, that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Okay, I was going to ask about W, but I'm scared George might take that from me.
Go ahead and do that, you can have one.
Well, we got a motion and a second on the consent agenda, all in favor first, and I'll take the exception second. All in favor? George, six, oh? Six, oh, any exceptions, George? Six, oh. Any exceptions, George?
Yeah, W and X.
George, W and X. Ms. Newman? Dr. Tisdale? M? Mr. Glavin?
Recusing myself from Y.
Recusing from Y, and Mr. Barrett? None. Okay, consent agenda passes. And US table. Code enforcements?
The, the first case on the agenda, item A, Ralph Marsh, 321 Benaki Avenue. This property's still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Ralph Marsh? Anyone here to speak on behalf of Ralph Marsh? Consider that matter clause.
Item B on the agenda, Becca Elizabeth Vanderford, 309 Ranor Street. I got a call from their attorney yesterday. They are working on the property, and he asked for an additional thirty days. We would support that.
Okay, motion for thirty days by Ms. Newman. I'll second that. All in favor? Six, zero.
Okay, item C on the agenda, Andre A. and Sabrina L. Enriquez, 494 Channelmark Drive. That case has been resolved. Item D on the agenda, NBN Foods LLC, 2518 Marshall Road. That property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of NBN, NBN Foods?
I have a question. That's in Edgewater Park?
On Marshall.
Okay, all right, I know where it is. Thank you.
Is anyone on behalf, want to speak on behalf of NBN Foods? We consider that matter clause. Going to move on to the routine agenda. I need a motion on the routine agenda.
So move.
Motion by Dr. Tisdale, need a second? Second by Mr. Barrett? Any questions, George?
Yeah, Walt, Ken, Keith, one of y'all, who's the big report, any money coming to their bank? Do we, any more money coming in? Nope. That ain't good. Uh, what's the problem? You said there's a problem? What's the problem? Has it said again?
This ship, ship. Yeah, you thought it said another word.
Yeah, I was.
I was just wondering, I said, well, we're getting kind of loose here. We might be drinking.
Any other questions? Too much eggnog. Any other question? Any other questions by the council? Okay, I'm gonna call for the question. All in favor? Six, zero. Motion carry. I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Dr. Tisdale. All in favor?